Yes, it starts. Play being October 15th, October 5th, 2016 will hold up the planning board tonight. We have payroll to do. We have some for Alan and Jane. They go from 10:10 to 10:15, 10:17 to 10:22, 10:24 to 10:29, 10:31 to 11:05. Do I have a motion to accept the payroll from Ezra at that time frame?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Got some planning board bills. We have one from Kidney Bones for $114.75. Graves Engineering for $269.50. Worcester Telegram Gazette for $120. And one from Graves Engineering for eight site visits totaling $2,142.85. All the invoices are included in the amounts that were read. Do I have a motion to pay the bills, Ezra?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a little bit of correspondence. We have one from Nexamp. It's for the Charlton Solar Project on Copanahill Road. It's the annual decommissioned safety fund payment. Attached is the annual contribution by Nexamp to the distribution safety fund for the SOA already located off of Copanahill Road.
Yeah, that's the annual. The annual, it's every October. They established it two Octobers ago with $10,000 and then for about 10 years they pay $3,000 a year. And they're very diligent. We didn't have to call and remind them. They sent it right in the other day. So that's, we're up to $16,000 now. The town treasurer keeps it in account.
We have a letter here from Robin Craver, Town Administrator, accepting the appointment of making Alicia the alternate for the board. And we have a letter from Robin Craver showing that the board appointed Peter Boria as the planning board member, switching places to Alicia. We have some site visit reports. There's a pretty good sized one here from Treehouse Brewery from Graves Engineering. There's, a lot of comments are highlighted. Graves has enclosed a lot of photographs here. I'm just going to pass this around. It's kind of long to read, getting an idea what Graves have been doing for us. Worcester County Housing Resource Incorporated is an agency serving the housing and community development needs of central Massachusetts town and household. This year we are working with the Massachusetts Attorney General Office on a program to provide funds to assisted local communities in the strategic demolition of residential buildings to remove hazardous structures and to assist in local redevelopment efforts. Please review the attached request for proposal. The applicant formers seeing this would be useful for your community. Alan, would this be for any particular property?
It's good to keep in mind. It went to the Selectman Planning Board Board of Health and Building Commissioner. Dominic Macedleano wrote it and that nonprofit affordable housing entity is our partner in the Meadowview project. So I know they have a good reputation, they're working well with us, but apparently they got a state grant and they're letting towns in the county know that if you're looking to disassemble something that has hazardous material, we might have some grant money and we can work with you. So nothing that we're working on, but maybe the Board of Health, Building Commissioner might. It's just something to keep in mind.
We have another letter here from Robin Craver to regards to the road layout acceptance of Jenny Rhodes Extension. Please be advised that the Board of Selectmen held a road layout public meeting for Jenny Rhodes Extension at their meeting on September 27, 2016 and voted to approve the layout in such way subject to planning board recommendations. That'll be on the warrant for this.
Yes, I talked with Russ James this morning and they're working on just those last few field items, so we're on schedule for a town meeting.
We have a letter here from Attorney Kathleen Neal. It's regards to notice of intent to sell for other use per Massachusetts General Law 61A and on North Sturridge Road, 19.6 acres, assessment map 13A4. Please find the enclosed the following additional material in reference to notice of intent submitted on or about August 18, 2016.
That's not a new one. One of the ones that you recommended, no, not taking the right of first sale. Jim Cosgrove, Town Counsel, just wanted more information from her that was required as the standard format. So that's an addendum to the previous one.
The Charlton Zoning Board of Appeals had a meeting held on September 20th. The zoning board of appeals voted to approve a variance/special permit submitted by Wesley and Judith Stevens related to property located at 119 Lakeview Drive. Presently located on the premises is a single family home. Petitioners seeks to add in addition to the lakeside and north side of property. The board voted to approve that zoning requirement. Another zoning board of appeals had a meeting held September 20th. The zoning board of appeals voted to approve a variance/special permit submitted by Robert and Joy Mills related to property located on 93 Blood Road. Present location on the premises is a single family home. Petitioners seeks to request zoning variance for existing garage built in 1995. Zoning Board did approve their variance. The Charlton Zoning Board of Appeals again on September 20th voted for approval of a variance/special permit submitted by Danielle and Mary Muzuski related to property located at 35 Leland Drive. Petitioners seek, petition presently located on the premises is a single family home. Petitioners seeks to add a four season room, enlarge the kitchen, redo walkways, add steps, and deck. The zoning board of appeals approved that variance. And here we go, one more here. For the zoning board of appeals, in accordance to Massachusetts General Law, public hearing will be held on October 25th. Francis Helderson, petitioner for the property located at 80 Beach Road, assessment map 85A, Lot 13, Block C, has applied to zoning board of appeals for a special permit variance to Town of Charlton zoning ordinance. Presently located on the premises is an empty block. Block is located in an area zone A agricultural. Petitioners seeks to build a garage. That's coming up on April, October 25th. And that's it for my correspondence.
Just read what I underlined here and then continue there and then I'll cut it in half because it's fucking up to a snafu. You can just legally read the sections.
Notice of a public hearing, Charlton Planning Board Propose Zoning Bylaw Amendment. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, the Charlton Planning Board will hold two consecutive public hearings on Wednesday, October 5th, 2016, starting at 7:15 in the Planning Board Office, Charlton Municipal Office Building, 37 Main Street, Charlton, Mass. Two petitioners submitted by the Planning Board on behalf of the Charlton Sewer and Water Commissioners to consider amendment zoning bylaws as follows. To amend section 200-3.2, Use Regulation Part B, Use Regulation Schedule Subsection 6, Communication, Transportation, and Public Utility Use. B, to amend section 200-3.2, Use Regulation Part B, Use Regulation Schedule Subsection 6, Communication, Transportation, and Public Utility Use. Part A, to amend section 200-3.2, Use Regulation Part B, Use Regulation Schedule Subsection 6, Communication, Transportation, and Public Utility Use by adding a new line, sewer pump stations, and appreciate. Guess that would be it, Alan.
I would just read just last that line B, or it says B to amend 200-3.2.
To amend section 200-3.2, Part D, intensely for use schedule by adding a new footnote, number 10, to read as follow. Ten minimum performance standards as detailed in utensil of use schedule are hereby not applicable to sewer pump stations. Complete text of the two zoning proposed bylaws amendment are available at the Planning Board Office and the Town Clerk's Office for public inspection during regular business hours. Any person wishing to be heard on the zoning proposal should appear at the time and place designated.
I'll be very brief and then give Mr. Pecos a chance to comment or ask your questions. You met with Kevin Pecos, the interim director of the Water Sauer Department on September 7th and out of that conversation, the board sponsored these two warrant articles because they're both related to the same department. There's one, just to expedite, it's one public hearing notice, but it's two separate warrant articles at his board's request, which makes sense. One of them is to change some of the performance standards, setback, lot size, et cetera, on water pump stations. Right now, they would have to get a variance on something new, as they have in the past because whoever wrote back in 1987 that section of your original zoning bylaw put it to the same standard as the size of a lot for single family home. And you really don't deal with that on pump stations and the infrastructure. And that was for the water section. And we have no mention in that section of the use table of the zoning bylaw of sewerage at all because the sewer system came along a little later. So it's adding the sewer system in, I mean, it's adding the water system in and memorializing more logical standards for both water and sewerage. So it certainly makes logical sense as we discussed on September 7th and that's my overview. I defer to Kevin on any details or answering any questions or any further comments.
I think Alan's done a fine job. I can neither embellish nor add or detract.
Any questions on board members on the amendment change?
What you're doing is recommending to town meeting and they'll go to the mic. Procedurally, I would recommend voting to close the hearing and then two separate motions, one for each warrant article.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All votes in favor?
Aye.
I move a plan that we recommend to town meeting, Article 14, as presented to us tonight.
All votes in favor?
Aye.
Same votes for Article 15. I move that we recommend to town meeting approval of Article 15 as presented to us tonight.
The board will recommend with a brief comment at town meeting and then you'll be prepared if anyone from the audience asks anything from your commission.
Great. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. This is painless. I know if I wasn't here, something would have happened. No, seriously, thanks very much and thanks again to Alan.
You're welcome. Enjoyed working with you and getting it.
See you at our town meeting. Thanks. Here, I'll probably be seeing you before.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you, Alan.
You're welcome. 7:25, another minute. I should go tell those folks. We have a public hearing at 7:25. Noticeful public hearing of the Charlton Planning Board Propose Zoning Map Amendment. Pursuant to Massachusetts MGL, Chapter 40A, Section 5, the Charlton Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, October 5th, 2016, at 7:25 PM in the Planning Board Office of the Charlton Municipal Office Building, 37 Main Street, Charlton, Mass. On a petition of the Charlton Planning Board to consider the following. One, amend the Charlton zoning bylaws to adopt a medical research and development overlay district for property located easterly off of Copanahill Road, herein identified on Charlton Assessment Map, 43 Block A, Apostle 1.1 and 1.2 and 1.10. Two, amend section 5, Special Regulations of the Charlton zoning bylaws by adding a new subsection, 200-5.18, entitled Medical Research and Development Overlay District. Complete text and map of the proposals are available at the Planning Board Office and the Town Clerk's Office for public inspection during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the zoning proposal should appear at the time and place designated. Alan, if you'd start us off on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief and just give an overview and then turn it over to Attorney Bobrowski. As you know, just to refresh memories and to stay for the record, probably four times in the 16 years I've been here, Carl Sturz, who's excellent business in town, has come into you for site plan review, expand. And in those instances, they paralleled coming to you for site plan with the zoning board for a special permit to alter, extend, or change a preexisting nonconformancy. Under the way our zoning bylaw was written back in 1987, there is a ceiling on percentage of expansions for nonperformances. After that, you really have to change the bylaw. So as they propose an expansion now, what they need to do is change the bylaw and the mechanism we came up with that makes the most sense from a planning point of view is on the zoning map adding an overlay district and in the bylaw adding a subsection in Section 5 that lays out the site plan special permit process for the project. And that's what we're heading for for town meeting under the warrant article. After that amendment, they can then come in and apply to you for the actual project proposal and you'll review the project, you know, after town meeting. I'd rather defer to Attorney Bobrowski and the team on presenting to you any of the details, asking any questions, but I do want to commend everybody for working together to get to this point and I think it's been a smooth planning process and I think it's a win-win on everything that's being written and proposed and it'll move everything forward in a very well-planned manner with that.
Thank you, Alan. Good evening, board members. Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'm Mark Bobrowski. My office is in Concord, sitting next to me is Tom Carone from Carl Storz and Chris McClure, you all know. This is an overlay district and we've talked about it once before, I believe, a month or so ago. So I want to just run through it very quickly with you, explain why we drafted it, the way we drafted it. If you help that at the end of the process, you'll make it your own and send it off to the Board of Selectmen so that they can refer it back to you for the, so that we can go to the town meeting, which I believe is October 18.
Yes.
I want to make sure we have that right. So this is an overlay district, as Alan said. The uses that are going to be allowed under D, I took directly from your zoning bylaw today, so they would be biotechnology, these are the same terms used in your zoning today. Fiber optics facilities, medical research and development, scientific research laboratory, light manufacturing of medical equipment, warehouse, distribution facility, office, and associated accessory uses. I don't like to just say research laboratory without also saying under B that the Level 4 under National Institutes of Health are excluded. Those are the ones where you put your hands in through the tube, you know, in the white latex outfit. So we're not anticipating that at all. Having said that, the overall goal of this is to take the operations already in place for the corporation. Their warehousing is currently in Southbridge. That will be moved to a companion building close to the existing facility and the entire acreage of the MRDoD will be 79.78 acres. It will be superimposed on the underlying district, but the thinking here is that as soon as Carl Storz makes an application for a special permit and site plan approval in accordance with the overlay district, the underlying district goes away. They no longer have the right to build houses there. It would be a bad result if they could build a manufacturing facility, a warehouse, and then on the excess land started putting a subdivision in. So they would lose the rights under the underlying district and the MRDoD would control that. The dimensional regulations, we've more or less backed into it based on the existing building out there today. So 10 acres is the minimum lot area. Minimum lot frontage is 200 feet. And then using both the anticipated plan and the actual setbacks for the building out there today, 100 feet for a front setback, 50 feet for a side, 50 feet for rear, 40% coverage, and no more than 36 feet in height. We took your existing zoning regulations with regard to parking and loading, so the manufacturing use, biotech, fiber optics, medical research and development, and office is one space per 250 square feet and the distribution facility is one space per 500 square feet. Now that, that square feet of net floor area, these are terms used in your existing zoning today, but you do not define net floor area. Some of the standard research vehicles that I use for writing zoning suggested that up to 20%, taken off, meaning 80% of total floor area could be net floor area, but I thought it was more conservative to say 85%. And that's, that works for us and that's a definition you might want to borrow and put into the zoning because this term is used in other places undefined. Signs will meet the existing zoning requirements for the district. We're adopting the performance standards under the current regulations for flexible business development and business, what is it, business enterprise park. So those are the two references under H1 and H2. Want to make it clear that multiple principal buildings may be placed on one lot provided that building separation and internal traffic pedestrian facilities are approved by the Planning Board as part of the special permit review. This also requires site plan approval. We expect that you might want to adopt some regulations as to what number of copies and other requirements you foresee for this under J. And that's pretty much it. So the criteria here would be that you may approve, approve with conditions, or deny the application after determining whether the proposed development is consistent with the purposes set forth at the beginning. And those are pretty straightforward, to facilitate such facilities in town and to allow man uses ancillary to medical offices and whether it complies with the standards set forth in this section. In other words, it's a very traditional overlay district that's anticipating a user will take advantage of this to bring tax base to the town. Traffic flow should be expected to be fine and otherwise it's a win-win proposition for everybody concerned. Should add that when we do go to town meeting, we'll have a traffic report from Jeffrey Dirk of Vanass Associates, Inc., out of Andover. Jeff's one of the best traffic engineers I've worked with and I think there was talk that you might engage.
Yeah, what we'd like to do schedule-wise is the sooner you can get us that for Graves Engineering to sub it out to Jennifer Conley.
Okay.
We use Jennifer.
Yep.
So that way we're all prepared in case there's any discussion at town meeting of anything that's in the report.
Great. I'm happy to answer any questions a board member might have.
The only thing I'll add is from the memo I put in your packet, which is basically what Attorney Bobrowski reviewed, on the last page I took Chris McClure's map and if you flip to the very last page, you have a visual of the actual overlay district itself. And good job on the format. It's very visual and easy to read. Thank you.
And this is a part of the zoning bylaw when town meeting, if town meeting lets to adopt this new section for the MRDoD.
Yeah, I think we have it.
Yes, in the memo, in your packet?
Oh, the memo?
Yeah. If not, I've got extras. I'll pass around extras. Pass them all around. If you flip to the last page, it might have been in your packet two meetings ago because when we wrote it, we put it in the packet. So it consists of what Attorney Bobrowski just presented and if you flip to the very last page, there's an eight and a half, 11 of the map revision itself. That will be the overlay district. That will be added to the zoning map after the town meeting vote by Matt Franz at Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, who's our keeper of our GIS.
So procedurally, this article is doing two things. It's creating the MRDoD in our bylaws and also rezoning the Carl Storz property under that new, under that new definition.
Right. One question that might be asked, it often is at town meeting, is whether anybody can now create an MRDoD.
Correct.
Yes, but they needed two-thirds voted town meeting to move their property into it. So it's a whole separate kettle of fish.
But they would just have to have that, have their property rezoned under the definition that's already accepted.
That's right.
In the future.
That's right. And that happens very rarely.
Well, understood, but it's, it's left for someone else to use if they choose. Because someone with commercial property could do something like this as well. It doesn't have to just be residential to this MRDoD, correct?
Yeah.
It could be.
They'd have to have 10 acres.
They'd have to have at least 10 acres.
No, understood. They have to meet the requirements set forth in the bylaw.
Yeah. One of the key reasons for approaching it this way is because that part of town at that location is pre-existing nonconforming residential and that's how you standard address a nonconformancy expansion with this type of a procedure. But you're right, in other parts of town or nearby, you could approach it in other ways, but you'd still have to comply with it.
It's not a detrimental use of any property.
Not at all.
It's the nice thing about it.
Very well planned.
You should be big winners here in terms of tax base.
Procedurally, what I'd recommend again, similar to the previous two, is voting to close the public hearing and voting to recommend at town meeting. And then the way it will work, just explain for one minute, at town meeting, when they get to the warrant article, the chairman will present the planning board's recommendation and then we would all answer Q and A if there's any Q and A from anybody.
Do you think we should have Jeffrey Dirk there that night if possible or is Jennifer's already, if Jennifer's speaking on behalf of the board, am I?
Yeah. Jennifer won't attend. What she'll do is she'll review it and she'll talk to me and then she'll give us a memo probably just giving her general comments. It's hard to say because on the one hand you need two-thirds, so you always want to plan accordingly, but on the other hand, we haven't had anything that any of us can red flag that would lead to the level of having him there.
Yeah.
If you're able to handle what he prepares.
Yes.
Then you can handle it yourself.
Between the three of us, I'm sure we.
I think so.
Would you just be sure that Jennifer makes it clear in her written presentation that she works for you and not for us?
Oh, sure. Sure. That she's doing peer review. That she's doing peer review. Absolutely.
Any comment from the public? Say enough.
Make a motion to close the hearing?
Some more. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So support motion that would recommend Article thirteen as presented to us to town meeting for approval? Some more.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Given that it's October 18th, when do you think you can email me something to her? Give her a little time.
I'm going to be on the phone to Jeff Dirk, having his cell phone number on my ride back. So I'll have it here by the end of the week.
Perfect. Plenty of time.
Yep.
Thank you.
Keep in mind, town hall's closed on Friday.
And Monday.
Yeah, and Monday.
That's right. I'll actually check on my emails.
Jeff's pretty good.
I'll forward it to him.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you at town meeting. Has the warrant been released?
Ah, yes. You can give them that copy right there. Yep. And I'll email you a copy too. But that's a paper copy too to take with you. Either tonight or tomorrow, I'll send an email.
You know where we are?
Ah, they always put "tell me" at the end.
With usual luck, that's good.
But it's the fall, so there aren't that many warrants.
Okay. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Alan, procedurally, before we get to the zoning articles, there's the highlighted thing that says, no vote should be taken on any of these motions until we meet.
Yeah, that, that has been put in year after year. It's boilerplate that Jim Cosgrove puts in, he's quoting state law, that is basically letting people know and reminding even government that you need planning board hearings on these prior to, and then the planning board gives a recommendation. Or if we didn't recommend, if there was some conflict going on, then there's a time period in which, after X number of days, the town meeting can act on it anyway. The planning board can hold up by refusing to comment. So Jim inserted that about seven or eight years ago, just as boilerplate.
So the twenty-one days that is, if twenty-one days have not elapsed since the public hearing before the planning board was held.
Yep.
It's just, it's confusing.
I know. He's quoting verbatim a very confusing section of chapter forty-eight.
But we don't have to wait twenty-one days from our decision.
Not at all.
It's just the start, that first public hearing, right?
Yeah.
Is that what that twenty-one days is?
I don't even know what it is, but it does nothing, doesn't it? Yeah, and he's just quoting a very, two-page, one paragraph, two pages out of the state law that was written back in the nineteen-seventies. That, you're right, it's tough to interpret. What are you tripping up and not doing? But I know the intent of it, because I remember talking to Don Schmidt, who wrote it. He retired a few years ago. And he said the intent was to write language that a town council or a city solicitor could say, if a planning board was against something and wasn't commenting for or against it, just refusing to act, this overrides that and lets a town meeting vote. Because that's what was going on prior to nineteen-seventy-five, when they wrote that thing. But they didn't write it very clearly.
No, it's bizarre.
No, it's the joy of chapter forty-eight.
Okay, we have another public hearing at seven thirty-five. We're there.
Yes, Frank Bichieri asked if you'd continue it to October nineteenth. What is going on that's slowing down his revisions is, he met with Ralph, the developer, and they went over the cost of cuts and fills. And it was much more than he expected in terms of the seven-figure cost. So they're looking at how to redesign the layout on cuts and fills to drop it significantly and still do the project at the scale that they're looking at. It's doable, but he just needs time to get out there and analyze some of the locations. So he asked if it could be continued, and he'll get us something next week for Graves to do peer review.
We have a motion to continue public hearing to October nineteenth.
Some more.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can we get out of here early, Tony?
Yeah, good.
The annual goals and objectives. We put the second draft in, that we just added, what we talked about at the last meeting, in Section Four, which is your goals and objectives for comprehensive planning projects the upcoming year. We added, B, update the development permit guidebook. And if you flip to three pages in Section Ten, that we list the larger projects that we'll just be managing through the year, we added in the potential redevelopment of that southeast corner of Route Thirty-One and Route Twenty, where McClure Engineering used to be in the former pizza place because the owner is now thinking of what he'll do. I actually talked to a Realtor who's working with that owner last week. And so it is, it is on the burner for the upcoming year. And another Realtor is getting involved. I had a meeting with the two realty firms that are going to work together on that. So it's worth keeping on the list and seeing where it goes. I did forget to put on the list, I just thought I'd mention it, the Monson Commercial Self-Storage Facility. Now that it's been approved, I'm sure he'll be moving into fieldwork and we'll be managing that one too. And again, I'd just like to state that it's a guide. We know that other things will come up during the year that we have no control on, that will walk in through the door. But this is a template for what we expect over the next twelve months, proactive and reactive.
Has anybody ever talked anymore about the Trolley Crossing?
Um, I, I, yes, I wanted to bring that up under the Village District Planning, yes. Quite a bit the past couple weeks. There's a lot of effort up there on a couple parcels. In a few minutes, if I could get some.
Sure.
Do you need to vote on the votes?
Uh, you usually vote that, you know, just to finalize them as a guide. It's not anything official, but it's a reference for us to use as the year goes by.
We have a motion to accept the second draft that Alan has proposed before us. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Village District Planning?
Three things. First, just briefly, on the complete streets, the Selectmen, as you know, last Tuesday adopted your recommended complete streets policy. So that allowed me yesterday to sit down and go into the portal for the state DOT and do the submittal for the certification. So we have the submittal before them, asking them to certify Charlton as a member of the program. Like I say, it's kind of like BJ's wholesale club, first sidewalk grants, a little different. They'll review it and they score us on a scale of one to a hundred based on that policy statement. And eighty or above, we're fine. Anything below eighty, they would ask you to just work with them to revise it. They're not rejecting you, they just want it of a certain standard. I would assume we're getting the eighty because we did what they handed us and told us to submit. But if something, for some reason, comes up in the review, I'll just work with them on it. There's no time period, but they move pretty quickly. And I do know, actually, I'll give you a final copy of the final statement that you submitted over that has the acceptance date with a cover email I got back from the state confirming that it's been submitted into their portal. So Jane, one for you and four on the table. And I did read from an email that they posted on one of their websites that, at this point, they've got about eighty-five towns and cities in the state that are part of the program. So it's nice to see a lot of them, but it's nice to see that it's not such a huge amount that it'll be over competitive to get the money. You know, even though some of those communities have gotten certified, a lot of them went for the current round, and we're going for the next round of funding. So hopefully, a lot of those won't go for the current round. And then some of them might not even go for the second round we're in. They're just planning this out. So we'll take it step by step. I'll let you know as soon as we hear back from them. Once we hear back from them, we can really roll our sleeves up more between Jerry Foskett, myself, and Mike Andrade on the design. But, and then we'll get on your agenda with, you know, preliminary, finalize with you. And the design can be submitted with the application for the money to show our local match under the program has to be the design, and they pay for the construction. That was the first item on the Village District. The second one is what you asked, Mr. Chairman, about the northern tier of the Trolley Crossing. And I've got a Village District map on the table. And one down to your right. One down here, and one for me and Jane. Yeah, again, some of the details and the individuals asked me not to name at this stage of the discussion and planning publicly their name or a lot of the details. But I can certainly give an overview. You look at Trolley Crossing, and it's the northern tier of the Village District. And as you know, there is a solid proposal being put together that will come to you for site plan review to redevelop the Howlett property. And also, at the same time, we've been talking, as you know, with Richard Kier about his property. And then last week, myself and Mike Jacobs spoke at the Small Business Seminar last Wednesday night over at the Southbridge Savings Bank. And Sabrina Webb, the branch manager, and Ron Cooper, the vice president, asked if we would talk about Charlton in general, but also try to focus in as part of our comments and presentation on the Village District itself. So we had a good group of attendees, a couple dozen people from across the community, business, landowners, most of them you guys know, and I also knew, but it was some new faces, which was nice. And I did bring up what's going on in Trolley Crossing. And one of the other landowners was there, or his representative was there, an engineer. And he came specifically because he knew we were going to talk about Village District. And he is also very interested in smart growth mixed use, what the Village District allows. He's working with a consultant right now on some ideas to mix in senior housing with some either shop or office or service space. So you've got all this coming together, which is kind of nice initially starting brainstorming and talking to each other. Like I mentioned to them, and we've talked about briefly, we get free consulting, annual planning time from Central Mass Regional Planning. And with Jeannie Vincent's level of attendance, we get a bonus because Jeannie has put in so much time volunteering as a delegate this past year. That level of delegate participation, they've added even extra hours this year. Some of it is non-planning of those hours. The Selectmen and Robin Craver sometimes use part of that for non-planning, for municipal service items they're working on. But also, a good part of it is that. We used a lot of it last year for that Village District study. We used that for two years, actually. But I just want to put the idea out there today, nothing to finalize, and maybe bring in a few of these people to chat with you some night. But it's on your goals and objectives that we could use part of that free time to work with their principal planner, Jane Armington. She's a very experienced planner. She lives in Stirbridge. She replaced Eric, remember Eric Smith? He took a new job as a town planner up in the northern part of the county. And she would be very interested, particularly because she knows this part of the county and is living in Stirbridge, to work with us. And I've told her that one idea is, not so much a big plan or study, but maybe an evening visioning workshop that the planning board would sponsor and invite in anyone interested, but particularly the landowners and businesses on Trolley Crossing. And do some action plan blueprinting, not to throw phrases around, but kind of connect, network, and talk about all these opportunities. And that allows people to work together and maybe take some steps, both on their own and with the planning board, on really taking advantage of the opportunity of the northern tier of Trolley Crossing and these people's individual ideas. None of that has to be done before anything comes in. I mean, if they wanted to, if three weeks from now, the potential future users of the Howlett property wanted to submit a site plan, that's fine. And the workshop can be in this next year on comprehensive planning in general. But I do think that for the other properties, the owners like the idea of that type of thing. So that's where we are. And there was a lot of interesting feedback. There was one other officer from Southbridge Savings Bank who was very interested in the way we've been thinking about the Village District. And he saw a lot of opportunity from other communities. He's been working on financing projects. And he said, you know, the direction you're heading is going to just pay off over time.
Most of the Village District is in the purples color.
Yes.
These are older maps that doesn't include.
No, what happened is, that's a very good question. Howlett is not in the Village District. What happened is Oliver, and at the time, his attorney was Richard Neal, about a decade ago, you might still remember it because you were on the board then, about a decade ago, Richard came in one night to the planning board and just wanted to talk about zoning. And said, they were just thinking of the future, and we talked about zoning in general. And then, as time went by and I talked to him further, they figured they'd just leave it alone for the moment. So they decided not to go into Village District because they were thinking more that, at the time, potential of maybe someday, if it either sold or he leased it to somebody else, it would be more a traditional Route Twenty car at a big box or something. But what we've learned, working with Glickman-Cavago and, and a few other commercial Realtors, is in today's world, at the moment, at this point in time, they want to be right on Twenty. They don't want to be on a side street, no matter how close. So the proposed reuse that's being prepared for site plan fits, fits for the current zoning, but it's more service, white-collar oriented, as opposed to a large, big box retail. So the zoning, you're right, is not Village. It's kind of a transition over the Route Twenty right now, commercial, with a little strip of residential in the back.
Would it take much for him to get into the Village District if they decide to do it?
It's a good question because, well, a couple things. One, it would take the planning board recommending at a town meeting to expand, as you've done it twice before. And town meeting would just have to vote the boundary expansion. We've also talked a little bit, I've talked with Mr. Cooper at Southbridge Savings Bank because he's involved in the project, about, it doesn't seem like they need to use one hundred percent of the property. And Oliver is keeping the ownership. He's just going to lease it. So I put out the idea conversationally about doing what the chairman mentioned, over time. And that way, you could add this proposed use that's heading for site plan on the site. But you could add more. You could add a mix of other things. There's plenty of room there. And adding the Village District for that would really help quite a bit and allow a lot of that to happen at the density and mix that traditional commercial doesn't allow. So Village District rezoning over time could add that phase two of redevelopment to the property in a win-win manner.
Sure.
The third item on the Village District is just what I kind of mentioned in passing already, that there was a lot of very positive reaction and feedback at the Southbridge Savings Bank Small Business Seminars, Village in general. People really talked about the maps and, at one point, gathered around them and really kind of had an informal brainstorming. So I think you're heading in the right direction on it.
I'm sure you got some stuff for growth management?
Yes, thank you. And that leads to my list, too. I wanted to pass around first three handouts on three items and then just quickly go down a few other items. First, I thought I'd copy from you from last week's online, online weekly version of the Worcester Business Journal. They had a front-page article on the mass development funding for Treehouse. It's a nice article, very brief, but very informative. The mass development financed them with a little under eight million dollars in tax-adjent bonds. And then they described that and the project. I thought that was pretty nice, and it also takes a lot of promotion to the project coming in.
They'll probably still keep the Monson base, won't they?
That's what they say, yeah. They're not really looking to close it. This is just a expansion. Actually, I have four handouts, I'm sorry. They're all stuck together. Second one is, very briefly, that small business seminar I mentioned. I just wanted to give you the handout and make a comment, a very brief comment or two. I highlighted in yellow the public sector side of the agenda. I spoke and answered questions. Alex McMitt from the chamber, and Mike Jacobs, the vice chairman of the EDC, spoke. And just wanted to bring up that, you know, the biggest question for Mike is, where is our supermarket? And he explained the nature of supermarket business that, you know, obviously, his firm is working with potential landowners, potential companies. And they have their mathematical formulas for density and range, and they're staying on top of it. I give him, you know, growth information every couple of months that he keeps his conversations going. So I think he explained to the people and they accepted that. It's not being ignored, but there's nothing that can be done beyond what we are doing in partnership with Glickman-Cavago that will hasten the eventual development, which we will have in this community along Route Twenty eventually, of a supermarket. And people understood that.
Is that calculation foot traffic on Twenty or population?
It's very, it's very regional, combined with location, combined with range of, scale of density of housing throughout a large area with a computer model. They just. They just don't do it in the old manner anymore. And so it's several layers, yeah. Uh, third handout, let's go down the list. And again, I want to thank Jane for suggesting that we shift gears and speak to a different partner in the solar project. Um, this is just an email I received that from Bruce Forstel of the SolarFlare Project on cleaning up the the over-choked area. And to his credit, we spoke on the phone, he's worked very hard lately. And he gave him this email summarizing what they've done so far and what he'll get done, which he says in the next two weeks, and this was on September twenty-fourth, so in the next week, he's halfway through the two weeks. Um, he did a nice spraying himself along the road and the fences. He hired a landscaper. Um, they have a combination of arbor vady and hemlock out there, but he thinks the hemlock will do better in growing in as an actual visual buffer. And he's got a contractor coming in with a brush hog to mow some areas of weeds that he just couldn't get to himself. And we'll just keep in touch the next week. But to his credit, and then he will take care of it annually too, so.
They would probably put the hemlocks in that on the outside of that, right?
Yes, yeah. It's it's a row that's half-dead, the mix. And he'll put it on that outside to get it to grow up and in and add a partial visual buffer.
Right.
Uh, fourth item to hand out, and then I just have a few routine items just to go down verbally. I'm only handing it out first, five copies. And I'll just talk about it briefly without going into the details of what he wants to talk about, because that's for the agenda. But we have a request from Russ Jennings to get on a planning board agenda to talk about the noise requirements on his Sunset City project. And what I told him is two things, which is routine. One, need a request in writing, which is fine, and I appreciate he received it. And two, I told him that given that it's a large project that has litigation that's active with town government, the standard procedure is I just have to talk to Jim Cosgrove, which I did. And I'll summarize in a minute for you right now, and then I'll I'll update Russ tomorrow on that. You depending on the specifics of a litigation, and a town council could say, well, handle it in a certain way. Or he may say, he or she may say, given the specifics of the litigation, I can't recommend you put that on. Or he may say, just put it on and handle it accordingly. So I spoke with Jim yesterday and he said, conveyed to the planning board that A, it is always important to ask that question. And he would have been concerned whether, no matter what the issues were, if we didn't. B, he certainly has no problem putting this on an agenda because, and not to get too lawyerly, um, there's nothing specific to the litigation that is a problem from him from a town council point of view for you to have the conversation he wants to have on noise design. And C, he recommended that procedurally, because it's a letter to the board and it's related to a a large project and everything, that I shouldn't put it on myself. I should give you the letter this evening and state that I have no problem after reviewing with him to put it on for a standard discussion on his concerns, irregardless of whether we turn out to agree with Russ or not on what he wants to talk about. So I have no problem recommending to you, and Jim has no problem agreeing that if I have that point of view of putting this on your next agenda and giving him an agenda item of a normal length. Um, I do want to state that we are not holding another public hearing on Sunset City. Uh, if you wanted to make certain substantive changes that trigger a public hearing, you have to do it. You will not run this as a public hearing. I would recommend you keep it to a normal agenda item length. And let him come in, speak what he refers to with you, and have a dialogue on what he's talking about in the letter that he'd like to talk about about noise design and and the conversation as an agenda item. You're not, um, you're not taking any formal votes related to the the hearing. You're giving him your guidance, your direction, and what your requirements are conversationally on what he'd like to have a conversation with you about on noise design, so.
So basically, he hasn't finished designing the noise project, correct?
Right.
So he would probably be asking us questions about.
Well, I think his point of view from what he, if you look at the letter for a minute, he is not happy with our noise consultant, and we disagree. And he would like to come in and talk to you about that. And I don't have a problem after claiming with Jim that you have your conversation done. Basically, yeah.
Any discussion among the board members?
So do we need to make any vote or anything to allow to?
I would vote to direct me to place it on the next agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to place one agenda.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That sounds good. Moving down my list, a couple things, and let me grab another piece of paper. I've got a few things written down. But one of them is just a reminder that, again, we have the town meeting on October eighteenth. That's a Tuesday night. And we already have the warrants we handed out. And the only other item I wanted to add this evening is just a reminder, the week after next, Thursday, Friday, I'll be in Worcester both days. The Southern New England APA Conference is coming to Worcester. They rotate it. It's a American Planning Association conference held by three states, Massachusetts, Rhode Island, Connecticut, every fall. And they rotate between Worcester and Massachusetts, Hartford and Connecticut, and Rhode Island and Providence and Rhode Island. And this is the third year it comes back to the DCU Center. So I I'm very fortunate that I can just drive to it, not a big traveling thing. But there's about eight hundred, nine hundred planners, and I'll go to some of the panels and bring back information and share with you. But it's a great opportunity. It's a national level, three-state conference that's right in our backyard, so.
Great.
Bring back some stuff. And those are my items, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anybody have anything we should discuss or anything? Um, Jane had sent us some minutes. If we can take the time to read July thirteenth first, take a few minutes review. Uh, three votes be enough to approve one minute because we're not yet.
Yes, as as long as you have a simple majority of three.
Okay. Any comments for the July thirteenth minutes?
Make a motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If we can look at the August tenth. Any comments for the August tenth, two thousand sixteen minutes? Do you have a motion to accept the measure?
Some more.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Um. Do we have the, if we'll have to, the September seventh? We'll have to do executive session, vote on the other one, right?
If you want to, because it's an executive session, seven minutes, yeah.
Do I have any comments for the September seventh minutes?
Jane did a great job condensing thirty minutes of conversation in two paragraphs.
Same exact thing.
Here's to it.
Do you have a motion to accept the September seventh minutes as well?
Some more. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alan, you have any other? Would you like to discuss the motion?
No, that's it, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any board member have anything else? Um, what I'd like to do is, um, deal with the executive session minutes. So, um, what I'd like to do is, uh, during the, um, make make a motion to go into executive session on the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, Number two. Do you have a motion?
Some more. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That'll conclude this portion of tonight's hearing.